Hello, everybody. Welcome to the planning board meeting of April of 2024. We want to stand for the pledge.
Pledge of legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Before we start, just a few things. We have two alternates here. We have Kathy in for Sabrina and Jean in for Jackie. And the first thing I would like to do is the minutes from last month. We did get them electronically. We don't have them physically here. Does anybody want to make motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody want to say? And everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We can start with the Chen Yan Monastery.
Good evening. I'm Bruce Barbour, the Towns Environmental Planning Consultant. This is an application that's been for the board on several occasions. Very simply, it's to construct two individual freestanding two-bedroom homes on a monastery property on Route 301. The applicant has completed substantially complete site plan. A wetland permit has been applied for. Erosion septic control plan has been provided. So as a result, I've prepared for you this evening a draft resolution for your consideration. This is a Type II action under Seeker. There are some conditions. I just want to go over with the board real quickly that are found, starting on page, let's see, two of four. And basically, just addressing comments that were outstanding by both my office as well as John Andrews. There is a referral necessary. If we might have received it yet, I just have not gotten it from the Kent Fire District regarding firefighting. There are Putnam County Department of Health approvals pending at this time for the septic system and well installation. There is a bond amount in the estimate of $12,000. This would be a performance bond for erosion septic control, as well as any potential mitigation landscaping required. So in addition to the resolution this evening, I would request that the board accept that bond amount and refer that to the town board. In addition, there's just a few additional odds and ends, but it's basically the substantive elements for your consideration this evening. So the first action would be to accept the $12,000 amount for the erosion septic control performance.
Do we have to do a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public hearing first.
That's right. I'm sorry. Sorry.
We want to make motion to open the public hearing. Would I make a motion?
I'll move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody here? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And in the resolution, there is a mention that the public hearing was opened this evening and subsequently closed. So, sorry I got the cart ahead of the horse here a little bit. Basically, then, the first step would be to approve the bond amount for $12,000 and direct the planning department clerk to refer that to the town board for their approval. You can just do a general vote for that.
Okay. So we'd like to make motion to accept the bond amount for $12,000 for the consultant professional engineer for... I don't know. Here. The security fund for security for the town board. Somebody would like?
So $12,000 is the bond?
$12,000 is the bond.
Okay.
So that's what you need the motion for?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
Who's second?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the second act of the board case this evening is to, if you so choose, make a motion second and a roll call vote to vote on approving the resolution.
Okay. We would like to make the motion to accept the draft as stated for the Chen Yan Monastery.
I'll make the motion.
Who's like to second it?
Second.
All right. Roll call. Tom?
Aye.
Giancarlo?
Aye.
Hugo?
Aye.
Reg?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Thank you very much. And the applicant is reminded that this is a conditional approval granted by the planning board. There are still the conditions and outstanding items that need to be submitted and reviewed and approved prior to chairman's signature. So we'll work with you on that. You can be in contact with us when you get the materials. Okay? Thank you.
Okay.
Good luck.
All right. Thank you. Oh, okay. So Kent Self Storage?
Next is Kent Self Storage. Kent Self Storage is represented by Joe Rena who is here tonight. I just want to go through first order of business, public hearing. There is nothing else we can do. Mr. Rena has made a submittal. We deferred reviewing that submittal till after the public hearing. We didn't want to try to review things twice. We also, as the board may recall, at the workshop session, we made a referral to the county that kind of got omitted. So we need to wait 30 days, but we do have a draft resolution prepared that we will submit for your consideration in May, providing there are no substantive comments at the public hearing. And I will now turn this over to Mr. Rena.
It's going to collapse.
You're broken.
Wait to get that filled.
Someday we'll have it.
Good evening. Joseph Rena, the Principal Site Design Consultant, this evening representing Kent Self Storage Partners Two of Wayne, Pennsylvania, who own the property in question and offer a public hearing. The property is... The project is called Kent Self Storage Two. It's located at the intersection of Route 311 and Luddington Court. It's owned industrial commercial office district. The property is currently vacant and it's 2.7 acres. The property slopes up from Route 311, plateaus off, and then continues to rise after that. The plateau area is mainly the site of where the building's going to sit. So it's being proposed as a three-story self-storage building. It has a footprint of a little over 16,000 square feet. Overall, it's over 48,000 square feet with about 34,500 square feet of rentable space. So the remaining area is office space for the attendant and hallways, et cetera. In total, there are 362 units of storage being proposed in the building, and they range from five by five to 10 by 25. So the main entry point is at the south, is the, at the south end of the site, as you could see on the site plan. It climbs up towards the front of the building, heading in a norly direction. There's some parking on the right, which is porous pervious pavers. That's 15 parking spaces. And then it terminates in a T-turn so that emergency vehicles or any other vehicles can turn around. In addition to that, a later addition to the plan from the initial renditions that you were presented was the fire department wanted a second access point, which we provided, and it comes off of Luddington Court. And that's going to be gated to be determined what type of gate the fire department wants and what type of locking mechanism they would like on there. So we have full fire access for the project. The off, on the backside of the building, tucked into the hill, is a water tank, water storage tank, which will provide fire suppression for the building, as well as a hydrant for the fire department to draft off of until the tanker trucks arrive at the site. So it would be a temporary measure. The building will be served by a septic system, which we're currently working on getting reapproved. The permit expired, and we're getting that reapproved. There's a stormwater management system proposed for all the impervious surfaces, which is located between the parking lot and Route 311. Some of the other approvals that we're going to need besides the Westchester County Health Department, I'm sorry, Putnam County Health Department is the New York State DOT. On the plan, we included a business and operation plan, which gives the hours of operation, which are 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday. Staffing and hours, staffing hours, there'll be one person, a manager onsite, from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And the limited, the storage will be limited to, or what would not be allowed, will be lithium batteries, combustibles, firearms, illegal paraphernalia, perishable products and items above $5,000 in value. Each renter will be required to sign an agreement, a lease agreement, saying that. And there'll be no retail sales occurring at the property. Shortly, I'll show you the elevations of the building and some cross-sections we did to show visibility from, looking from the west and looking from the north. We had a letter, we have provided a letter report from Tim Miller Associates. They looked into the potential for bat habitat on the property. The property does not show up on the DEC environmental mapper as an area of concern. And Steve Marino from Tim Miller Associates did an onsite visit and did not witness any habitat that was, he found suitable for bats. We did a much nicer representation, but we've got a cross-section looking from... So the one to your right, that one is looking from the west, down the hill at the tank. So we're providing screening above and around the tank, between the tank and the residential properties, which are significantly far away on the west side. The other cross-section to your left, looking from the residential property, that's to the north of the site. And again, we're providing screening there, heavy screening through that. And there's a good buffer of existence, good stand of trees, existing trees, which will provide a nice visual barrier from the building. It's not, it's going to be, until the trees mature, that are, it's, they will see, they will see through, filter through the trees, they will see the building. But once those evergreens that are being planted on the property line mature, they'll, they will not be visible anymore. So the elevation that, that's up now, the long elevation, that is the front of the building facing Route 311. So you see there's 10 garage-type doors on that side that, those are the only garage-type storage or exterior entry storage to the building. So those are the 10 by 25 spaces. All the other spaces are only accessible from the interior of the building. We're providing some 3D renderings there, one looking as if you're coming up the driveway. That's the one on the left. And then the other one, as if you're standing at the corner where it intersects with Luddington Court.
And the second one to the right would be your, the closest neighbor, correct?
Correct. And I'll take any questions if you have any questions.
Does someone stay there? An office manager or anything?
Yeah, so from 6:00 to 10:00.
6:00 to 10:00.
6:00 to 10:00.
And so the, but to get inside, like if I had something inside there for the interior rooms, I can get in?
You would have to have coded access to get in. Not just anyone could walk in.
And it's 24/7 access for anybody that's?
No, it's not 24/7. It's only till 10:00 p.m. It's 8:00 to 10:00.
So this person's in an office there? There's an office for him?
Right. So... This face here?
Yeah.
That's, that'll be the office.
Okay.
Have those colors close to what you're thinking?
Yes. Yeah, everything is on the earth tone level as far as colors.
Even when he's still doing the presenting? We can do it anytime?
You can do it anytime, but the other thing is...
But we're going to adjourn.
So those are the color chips for all the different materials.
Okay. Right now, we can open the public hearing. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And as a result, we're... Okay.
So just to be clear, as you may recall, in preparing for this meeting, we discovered that the, we did not make the 239M referral to the county. You authorized that at the last meeting. I'm hoping that Vera has done that referral. The county gets 30 days. So technically speaking, you cannot close the public hearing tonight. We would recommend it, we would recommend that you adjourn it to a date certain, that date being your next regularly scheduled meeting in May.
Okay. Let's see when that's going to be. Is that will be May 9th, isn't it? No, May 9th is next meeting? May 9th? Okay. Okay. I'd like to adjourn the public hearing until our next meeting, which is going to be on May 9th, 2024.
You want a motion?
Oh, yeah, anybody wants to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
John, will that cover us?
Second.
Will that cover us? Because it's not going to be 30 days.
Yeah, it's 30 days from April 4th.
We authorized it last in the workshop. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would just, at this point in time, we do have a resolution somewhat crafted. We would just ask your confirmation that it's okay for us to put it in a final form so that you can have it next meeting.
I have no problem with that. Anybody? The gentleman?
No. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay. Kent Fire Department.
This is a sign application to replace an existing sign at the fire department. The sign meets the requirements under the zoning code. Basically, the sign is going to be an LED sign. We have a letter from Mr. Walters indicating, based upon his review of the zoning code, it does meet the de minimis requirements for the planning board to authorize him to issue a building permit without site plan approval. There are just a couple of conditions relative to issuance of the building permit if the board chooses. The first is that the sign should not be illuminated by any flashing lights on the LED, which is part of the code section. Also not have any direct glare, also part of the code section. And then the code also requires the applicant to indicate the colors of the sign and the proposed material of construction, including the base material of the sign as its freestanding. So other than that, for consideration is to authorize the building inspector to issue a building permit for the proposed sign under a de minimis application.
Okay. That's just a simple vote.
Correct.
All right. I'd like to make the motion to authorize the building inspector to...
To authorize the building inspector to issue a building permit pursuant to de minimis determination.
Okay. To issue a building permit for the de minimis sign at the Kent Fire Department on Route 301. Anybody like to second that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
AJ, first rail two. The first part of that. This would be the sign approval.
Yeah. Please, gentlemen.
Hi.
My name is Aaron. I'm owner of the property of 486252. I have two, I saved the one for me, I just call for the sign. I called a, I called Vera this afternoon. She explained to me what's going on. The deposit I prepaid to the sign company, I don't know what they paid for you guys, but I paid them. I have all the documentation, statement, if you need it. So I called them.
Are we, sorry, are you, we're splendid to two, so are we talking?
Yeah, for the one. Yes.
All right. So you're doing the second one first?
The five on the first.
All right. You're doing the second one first.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I called them this afternoon, and the lady who working for the company, her name actually, Andrea?
Andrea.
Yeah. But, you know, they can call me tomorrow. She'll call you tomorrow to explain to you what's going on. But I paid the 75, $750 deposit for them, the DM plan for the permit.
Okay.
The deposit I paid them.
And they haven't filed for the permit?
No, hold on. No, no. It's not that. It's, it's the lady that was in question, she's looking to get her money back. But you're saying you paid her back?
Yeah, I prepaid the deposit for the...
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
Not yours to sort out.
Right.
So I think the only thing that's under consideration tonight is whether or not you would seek to return the escrow, subject to returning it to the property individual, is what it boils down to.
Right. And also making sure everything has been taken care of.
Making sure all the bills are paid.
All the bills are paid.
And you don't have a sense, Mr. Park?
I do. I do.
I'm here for...
So we can take care of that first part first. And anybody want to like to make a motion to return the escrow for, after everything is paid out of it, to the rightful person?
Nice job.
Add him second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So that's that one.
Don't move to next for the sign, staff member. I don't know you guys have, I don't, I don't hire any engineers because I don't have that big project. I do the site plan by myself, but I don't know you guys have one or your hand or, I don't have a written one.
You said cherry blossoms and a zard.
Oh, yeah.
Again, and I apologize, I was remiss. I didn't introduce myself first time. I am John Andrews, the engineer to the planning board. And as some of the members know, we actually made a site visit to your site today. And unfortunately, I think one of our first recommendations is going to be that you're going to need to hire an engineer because it's a little more complicated than we perhaps thought. Couple issues, there is some drainage issues between your property and the neighbor's property that need to be squared away. Second of all, the slopes are somewhat steeper than we expected them to be. So there's going to be need, there's going to be a need to do some special stabilization and grade off the slope to make sure it's, it does what you want it to do at the end of the day. So I will be issuing a memo, but our, I think the clear recommendation is you're going to need a professional's assistance in advancing your site plan. Because I think it's even, we like what you're proposing, but it's going to be a little more complicated because of the conditions that exist out there.
Okay.
All right?
So I have to hire?
Unfortunately, you're going to have to hire an engineer.
But I don't need, I don't need to do the pathways. So the pathway, I don't know, you guys see the pathways? They have, they already have, they already have pathway over there. The drain? Yeah.
Well, you're going to need, you're going to need some topographic survey, ground elevations. So you're going to need some of that because that backyard is relatively steep from your pro, from where your parking lot is up to the next road. It's fairly steep. So we are going to need some topography. So it would be, you need to talk to the surveyor about that. Because the stakes are already there, but, and you're going to need an engineer to help with figuring out.
But I can't just plant the trees?
You can't just plant the trees yet. We need to make sure all the issues are resolved. Because you know, you got that, you have a, the board, there is a, like a standing water ditch that runs along almost the entire width of the property, right off the parking lot. And that ditch kind of makes a turn at his neighbor's property. And the neighbor's property kind of cuts it off, but it looks like it heads to the right of way. And there is standing water there. There, it looks like there's standing water there for a good period of time. And there's some drainage issues because there's some pipes that come from the upper road, run down through his neighbor's property. There's some details that are missing. And what we thought was going to be a very simple, clear it, plant some trees and be done, is not so simple. There's, there's issues with regards to drainage, how we stabilize that slope, how we clean that slope, and, and it really needs to be looked at by a professional and give this gentleman some guidance to do it right. Because I'm afraid at the end of the day, if he just went in there and planted, it would not look the way he wants it to look.
Oh, the, no, I stay the joint, the work, the drain, the water drain lines. I tried to, I don't know, you say the...
Yep. I know. But it needs to be dealt with by a professional because it's, it's complicated out there.
Oh, okay. You know, that's, that's not that much water.
I understand that today, but, but in the long run, the whole concept of how we drain and where that water ends up needs to be dealt with now.
Okay.
Unfortunately, you opened up, you opened up the slope, and now we've got to deal with the issues.
Okay.
So that's, that would be my recommendation. I'll get you a written response, and then you can provide it to your professional.
Okay. So I was hiring an engineer then.
So there's nothing we were doing today for this?
Yeah, I would think it's simple. So I don't, the old drain line is already there. It's like a broken, cracking. I just want to replace them. Let the water just drain. No, I try, you know, the property right next to, right next to me is like empty now. They come very colored trees. That's why I do, that's why I try to do nice. Because with the cutting down of those trees, my property just like, just right in front of everybody. Before we hiding, or probably like hiding, you know, nobody can see. All the trees are gone.
Right.
That's very nice. Then they cutting down. So I said, everybody say, what's going on to property? So that's why I'm trying to make it look nice. I tried to plant some green jam just between my property to property next to us, to, you know, that little pile block. I would think it's simple, just to plant the trees from the home street all the way up to the tree on the path. And then plant that tree, you know, iron in the backyard. So, you know, it's just, they just have a big issues for the, for the drain problem. So I have to hire an engineer. All right.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you.
All right, Aaron. Have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.
So, by the way, do you guys have any recommendations?
You can probably call Vera tomorrow, she'll give you the list of names, but people that frequent, but we can't give you any recommendations.
Okay.
Yes. All right. The next one's Hudson Valley, Nikita. And just for the record, Tom Faro has recused himself from up here. Because... And just for the record, Tom Farone has recused himself from up here, because he is presenting.
I'm still sorry to bother you guys.
That's okay.
So, what we do next?
I'll get you, look at a letter from Marshall in a week, and then you need to talk to your engineer, and then you can show him our letter, and he'll know what to do.
Okay.
All right, good night.
Hello, everyone, Thomas Farone. You know me as vice chair for the planning board, but in this case, I recuse myself as stated. I must say, you all look very impressive from this side of the table. This is just an update to the site plan, or just for the record, I do represent Hudson Valley Aikido as a consultant. This is the change of use from a former tavern to a martial arts studio. And I've been working on a site plan, I just submitted yesterday an updated dated April 5th, which addressed Mr. Andrews' comments from April 3rd, and Mr. Barber's comments from April 11th. So, I anticipate we'll get a timely review for that. I do appreciate all the, all the comments received to date. One new piece of information is the Putnam County Department of Health says they need to approve a change of use, so we're going to work on that presently. We're going to have the septic system do an open pit inspection and a hydraulic test and a, and a dye test, so we're working on that presently. Their application says they do need preliminary approval from the town. I don't know if, if there's something we can get in that regard. Would you guys know about that? Their, their application says they need a preliminary approval from the town. This is Putnam County Health. I don't know if that's true.
If you're looking for a consecutive plan, you can submit it.
Okay.
So, when new construction, we discussed the test, and that's probably something to be looking for.
Right. Oh, I see.
But right now, I think it's existing, so we...
I got it. Okay, makes sense. I also submitted on behalf of the client for a sign approval, and we have some images of the sign that were presented to the board. I'm curious if we can review that and get comment, perhaps approval prior to the full site plan approval and change of use. I don't know what the policy is there, but I would ask the board if, if that's possible, or at least get some comments. And the last thing that I have is, this is, apparently it seems like it's on a county road, and we, looks like we need to get, and Bill, would you agree with that, that part?
Yeah, it's county road.
Okay, so we'll have to go to the county and have them review it. And that's all I have for now, just an update.
For the record, I've always felt you look impressive from down here. So, this particular application, the board has reviewed on two occasions at the workshop. It is an existing structure, a change of use from a former use to a permitted use under a special use permit under the town code in the Townes Road Overly District. The site plan has been developed with an adequate number of parking spaces pursuant to a service use as defined in the town code. There has been several substantial improvements that have been done to the site from its present conditions. Tom is correct that the Putnam County Department of Health is going to want to have some information with respect to the function of the septic system with the change in use from its former use. And in addition, because it is indeed on a county road, or at least the segment is a county road, the town will be required to submit a 239M referral to the Putnam County Planning. And so, we would have liked to advise the board to schedule a public hearing for next month, of which you certainly can do so, but we will not have enough time, the 30-day time, to hear back from the county in order to close that public hearing. So, it might be advisable to give Tom an opportunity to finally get care of the rest of the comments, hear from the county health department, Putnam County Department of Transportation, Fire Department, all those kinds of items that are remaining, come back, and we'll hopefully have the 239 in the works and be scheduled in the public hearing for June. Okay? So, I have a comment memo prepared. I think, Tom, you got this, of course you said, so that's where we are with me.
I, I don't have much else to say, other than the fact that we did do a site visit, and on the basis of that site visit, we recommended some modifications that Mr. Farone is going to take under advisement. One of them is to eliminate one of the parking spaces on the site plan as number nine. It's kind of an awkward position, so what we, our recommendation out in the field was to take that parking space and, and basically land bank it, and, and, you know, stripe it as not a parking space, but in the future, if it was necessary, it might go. The other recommendation we made was to kind of flip-flop the ADA and its adjacent area, so that a car pulling in and out has a better line of sight. There's actually a shed on the neighbor's property that creates a real line of sight issue. So, it, that's what renders that one parking space in the ADA, makes the ADA switch necessary. A couple other things we were advised of, if you remember at the workshop, we did discuss perhaps contacting NICEAG about an area light. They in fact did that, and they will be adding an area light on the existing pole, so it'll kind of have the effect of, of, of like a street light. It will be lighting the site up, but it will be also lighting that area in general. So, that would be seen as an improvement. The other issue that we looked at is there's a rather steep slope off the parking lot, and there's a little hump, and then there's some parking bumpers, but based on our observations, we suggested, and I think again, they're going to take it under advisement to perhaps investigate putting a guide rail along there, so that it kind of gives an extra, and we recommended a decorative type wood guide rail rather than the, the standard W metal shape that is ugly. And other than that, the only big issue that, that we foresee here is time for the 239M referral, and what's going to happen with the septic system? Because it's, it's an interesting facility in the back of this, and that's all I shall say. But as, as Bruce said, I think the best we can offer is, let's try to wrap as much of this up as we can for next month, and then schedule a public hearing in June.
Okay.
Thank you, consultants. I will say regarding the lighting, they said that it's going to be actually one light pointing each way to light up the parking lot very well. And my clients did tell me if they just kept it in use as a tavern, we'd all be drinking beers right now, and everything would be wonderful.
The Ryder property.
We just wanted to give the board an update on Dr. Ryder's application, which was discussed at the workshop. Determination was made by the board at the workshop to agree to the applicant's attorney's suggestion to meet, to go over in detail the comment memos that Mr. Andrews and I have prepared. That is scheduled for next week. There's no action to be taken tonight by the board, but that is just, we wanted to give you the update of where we are right now with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Leila's Nail Salon.
The Nail Salon is located on Route 52. There's actually two elements to this application. One is a very simple sign application. The sign that is proposed is both a wall sign above the storefront, as well as a sign in the bank of road signs outside of the commercial facility. They all meet the code requirements under the zoning code. We have a letter from Mr. Walters indicating same dated April 4th. So, this would be certainly considered a de minimis application for sign approval, of which the board would, if you choose, authorize the building inspector to issue a building permit. However, on page two of my memo, there are some conditions, and basically, in the March 2024 consultants meeting, we met with the owner of the property or managing partner of the property, and he indicated, and he was told, that it is a change in use from the existing property or uses in this space to something different. And as such, he would need to get, either submit a site plan approval or an as-built map less than five years of age, or he would have to apply for a de minimis or exemption consideration under the town code. He has not done either one of those things. The other thing that was discussed is that this is in the Kent Sewer District, and that he would be required to submit a calculation to the sewer inspector to ensure that the change of use is not going to put him over the allocation of wastewater discharge from that particular property, which he has not done so. So, I think that, all things considered, the recommendation in my letter for the board's consideration this evening is, number one, to confirm that this is a de minimis sign application, authorize the building inspector to issue a building permit, subject to the conditions being meant prior to the issuance of the building permit. So, the owner would be able to submit that materials and hopefully take care of that. I would ask also, as is the case in the code with a de minimis or exemption determination, that if that is the case, that it not need come back for this board, that Mr. Walters and I would make that determination, and it would be moving forward accordingly. So, that's what's for you this evening.
Okay, so that's a simple vote also.
Yes.
And so, we want to make a motion to confirm that it's going to be a de minimis application and refer it to the building inspector to provide a building permit, subject to the conditions you referred to.
Correct.
We'd like to make that motion.
I'll move.
Who's second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think he's moved for the last one here.
John Correll. What did I do wrong with the, I'm the last? This is a lot line adjustment on Miller Hill Woods Court, which is way up there in the woods. It's for Dan and Sheila Westfall and Mark and Brianna Martinelli. This is Westfall's property, this is Martinelli's property, this is the existing property life, and this is the proposed property order. And Mr. Westfall just wants to get some driveways completely on to his own property. The total acreage is 6.6 acres. Westfall's property is three and a half acres, and Martinelli's property is 3.1 acres. It's not much to it.
This is, again, as Jack indicated, a two-lot, lot line modification, revision, as it's called in the town code. Both John and I worked on this collectively together, I issued the memo on my letterhead. Basically, there are a few odds and ends pursuant to the code that we need to see, one of which is important, that we need to see the deeds that are proposed of the two properties that the planning board attorney can review prior to your approval. There are some other odds and ends pursuant to the code that need to be taken care of. My suggestion to the board this evening is to have Jack take a look at responding to the memo, get everything in order, come back for the next month, and hopefully move this forward. This is not require a public hearing by the board, so in theory, if we get it all together and move forward, this can be determined next month. And there's just a few, I'll just go over a couple of the conditions while we're here. So, there's a couple of waivers, I think that Jack is looking to get, Jack, you're looking for topo waivers, I think, if I'm not mistaken. So, another just consideration for the board is to waive as per the applicant's request, topographic survey, there is no proposed site disturbance associated with the proposed action, the deeds we discussed. And basically, you know, that's about it. Some odds and ends, and I think that if we can get a couple of these things taken care of next month, it looks like something very simple the board can act on. Jack?
Yeah, I don't have any, I just wanted to make sure that the board understands that this is, it's really just, it's merely a property transfer between two consenting parties. Your code, it's a very simple proposition, there is no public hearing requirement, and from a secret standpoint, it's, it's a type two. And as Bruce says, we just need to dot some i's, cross some p's, and, and get some clarifications on perhaps potential waivers, and if we get all that in time for next month, we could wrap this up with a simple resolution.
Okay, sounds good. Excellent.
Could we have a resolution drafted for the next meeting?
The board directs, you still direct us to do so. I have no set, I take no set time, I mean...
Okay. Anybody have any objections to?
No.
Okay. Grant that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
All right, we're below the line. A-class builders.
So, A-class builders seeks to improve a property on Route 52, basically roughly across the street from the old batting cages, and the applicant met with the consultants at the March 2024 consultants meeting. I sent you all an email of what the outcome was of that meeting with the applicant and his engineer. In, in summary, he wishes to develop that property with a three-story building, of which there will be two one-bed, excuse me, 10 one-bedroom apartments, and ground floor restaurant and office retail space. The applicant is aware through his engineer that in order to do that, he would exceed the allocation of wastewater discharge to the sewers as the project is in the town of Kent Sewer District. And in so doing that, he has applied to the planning board, but is seeking town board approval for that modification of allocation, increase in allocation from approximately 400 gallons per day to what has been represented, at least to me, and I can't confirm the calculation, but about 4,000 gallons per day. So, the action for the board to take this evening pursuant to the town code, which is section 61-78D1, is to refer the application to the town board for their consideration of whether the increase in allocation is merited. If it is granted by the town board, the applicant can come back. They have asked us to hold in abeyance any reviews and considerations until they hear back from the town board. So, tonight, what we're asking is for your authorization for me to just craft a simple referral letter from the planning board to the town board, asking for them to consider the wastewater allocation as part of their process.
Okay.
I have a question?
Yeah.
If we send it to the town board, and they grant that, then it comes back to us, are we obligated to?
No.
Yeah, that same section of the code, Tom, indicates very clearly that regardless of the determination by the town board, does not prohibit the planning board from modification, changing, or denying the application outright. They also have several hoops to go through. The site, as they presented, is almost entirely impervious surfaces. They're in the DEP designated main street area, they're going to have to treat the stormwater. There was no conceptual idea of the plan I saw of forest stormwater, they were encouraged to go to DEP. There also, there's wetlands across the street, and in addition, there would be some zoning variance required. So, there's quite a few elements to go through, but at least at this juncture, I think the largest component of that is whether or not there'd be granted an increase in allocation. So, really, it's just right now, a referral to the town board for that, but to answer your question, it would not inhibit the planning board from further review and modification of the project.
I have one question too, Bruce. How far along did the laundromat get? Because that's across the street.
Yeah.
Did it go to the town board and come back?
No. Basically, the laundromat got to a point where they, they realized they needed a, a modification, an allocation increase as well, and it just kind of fell off the map, we didn't see it after that.
So, we never actually sent them to ask permission from the town?
Correct. As far as I know, this is the first, memory serves me correctly, the first time the planning board has had this request to be referring it to the town board for this type of consideration. Okay, Jack?
Yeah, I just wanted, the other thing to, to say is that this is kind of somewhat related to the, the gentleman that was here for AJ First Realty, because this site is right next door.
Right, right.
And interestingly enough, our site visit opened a Pandora's box, as, as the chairman will attest. There's a bunch of drainage stuff that's going on that is not properly... There's a bunch of drainage stuff that's going on that is not properly accommodated on this particular site plan. So to your point, merely getting sewage capacity makes their, gives their property, gives their proposal some substance, but there's a long ways to go. And what the final product will be, is anyone's guess at this point in time. So, thanks, John.
So the action for the board this evening would be to authorize me to write the letter referral to the town board, and also to agree to have us hold in abeyance any reviews that we would do of the materials submitted until such time as they return before the board again, planning board again.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion for you to, Bruce, to write a letter to the town board, oh, sorry, referring this project to the town board for an, was it, increase of sewer?
Increase sewage allocation.
Sewer.
Yeah.
And also to hold the information until we hear back, if they are coming back in front of us.
Yep.
You would like to second that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Got the rest of these, buddy?
Well, I think so.
Okay.
I'll take these real quick. Tories, Ruopoli, the Gypsy Trail Club, Guy Lazaka Mayet. We are all waiting for resubmittals from the applicant in most of those cases. I just spoke with Mr. Walters. We had met Mr. Guy Lazaka out there, and we expected something. I'm going to reach out to Paul Lynch, who he indicated was going to be his engineer, because that's probably one of the more pressing of the matters. Nichols Road, we're waiting for an opinion of council. Route 52 Development, interestingly enough, you should find in your email inbox of late this afternoon, memorandum from council regarding the secret issues that were open. I, I believe it addresses things, and I think unfortunately, he's not here this evening, so other than to acknowledge that you got it, I would suggest you may wish to withhold any discussions of it until he can be present and, and address your concerns. And then the last one, New York State DEP and Seven Hills. This has hit an interesting hiccup, and Vera and I are trying to figure it out, because DEP is still working with Seven Hills, but DEP filed the map, and we can't figure out how they filed the map. So it seems to have gotten signed, and I think it was actually Hugo that signed it, but we can't find...
Do you have some map?
No, we can't find the paper trail that said it was time to sign it. So, because that was at the transition when Liz was leaving, and, and she was the last... So needless to say, they still haven't settled with Seven Hills, but the property appears to have been filed, the property subdivision plaque appears to have been filed in the county clerk's office. And it looks like it's substantially addressed our concerns. I haven't had a chance to get into it, but it seems to have fallen in a little gray area, and I'm not throwing anyone under the bus, please understand that. But there was a lot of back and forth, and I think maybe the county misinterpreted something and got, or not county, DEP misinterpreted something and submitted for a signature and got it without having all the paperwork.
Okay.
We'll figure it out, folks.
Okay, good. Anybody else have any business? All right, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Anybody want to second that?
I'll make, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.